And it didn't work, or it didn't do that till you went live.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, are we ready? Yeah, Paul, can you hear us? Okay. A little bit. And it didn't work, or it didn't do that till you went live. Okay. All right, are we ready? There's a massive delay to the event. Okay. So we need to... Sound might be coming over these monitors, I did not check that earlier. All right. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM on April 20th, 2022. Presser, collective leaders, please.
Collective leaders, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please, sir?
Ms. Combs?
Yeah.
Mr. Lippert's here, Mr. Ricks.
Muted, sir.
We got him on the video. President, Mr. Swayze.
Yeah.
Mr. Underwood.
Here. Brings us to modification approval of agenda, do you have a motion to modify the agenda?
I'll make a motion to modify the agenda. I'll make a motion to pull action item nine pack two from policies I H A M in the review. I'll also vote to have suspended.
Okay. Anything else?
I would also like to add twelve pack one, action item, which is in addition to the UCL handle.
All right. Do I have any other motions to modify the agenda?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you. No. All right, call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs?
Hi.
Mr. Lippert, aye, Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, agenda is approved. Brings us to four dot zero, open forum. I do not believe we have anyone signed up to speak at open forum. Brings us to five dot zero consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, approve consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Lippert, call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs?
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye, Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Swayze?
Aye. Aye. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved, that brings us to six dot one, board member comments, I'm gonna go first. Happy birthday to Mrs. Combs. Um, I'll probably have an alibi later on, but, Mr. Lippert, sir.
Okay, we'll start off with scholarships, I know I had the opportunity to go throughout schools this year, this last one. Scholarships are hot and heavy, I know there are some deadlines on some scholarships this Friday. So please, get on your students, get those scholarship applications in, please. SCAP, wow, I had the privilege and honor to take part in this year's SCAP. Wouldn't evaluation, I mean, you're getting evaluated by your peers, I couldn't ask for a better evaluation. I had a great time questioning the evaluators, we were from small districts and their ideas were amazing and they took a lot of great ideas from us. So I really gotta hand it to Ms. Cheeseman, Mr. Goodman and Mr. Cooper, there was an outstanding presentation and patients that I've experienced, I wish we did that, stood up and represented ourselves very well. So I really look forward to seeing the results. Thank you to Mr. Underwood and Ms. Underwood, once again, they put in a lot of extra time on the board room, out of their own time, out of their own pocket. Thank you very much for your extra time with me, I appreciate it. And it's probably a spoiler alert, but Ms. Pam Burke, who's been at the school district for thirty-five years, she was a bus driver here when I went to school.
I know that she's not in school.
Yeah. Big deal, this is her last year.
She just turned twenty-one.
Yeah.
This is her last year, she's retired, I'm sorry if I'm spoiling somebody's party.
According to her husband, it's thirty-eight. Really?
You know, I bring it up, please, if you know Ms. Burke, please, make sure you drop by, tell her, thank you, thank you, thank you. She is an amazing person.
Yes.
She is irreplaceable.
Irreplaceable, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, without spoiling anybody else's, I'll turn.
Mr. Ricks, sir.
Uh, none of this time.
Okay. Thank you. I just heard Paul just reply. What are they having a hard time hearing? Our voices? Who's telling you this? Okay.
Maybe we should speak into the microphone.
Can we hear it now? Are you turning them up too loud?
All right, is that better? Paul, what do you think, does that sound okay?
Uh, it sounds okay, it's just there's a lot of loud noise, but like a fog noise behind you, but it might also be my reception where I'm at, so I don't know.
I will, I'll quit Zoom, you gotta monitor Q and A. And, um, hand raises for me then. Okay, is that better, everyone? Looking fine last week, fine now, is audio a problem? Okay, um... See, see, Jody, there's another one. Wide open. Okay. Um... Mr. Swayze, comments, sir?
No, I think everything's going great, TJ hit everything I wanted to say. Nope, we're good.
Awesome. Um, Mrs. Combs?
Um, I'm okay, thank you.
You're okay?
Yep, I will pass her right now.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, sir?
Uh, thank you very much, I also have SCAP kudos to our administrative team, they did an incredible job. Mark and Michelle and Lori did incredible. Our staff and students who came out, our community members who participated, I really wanna thank you for not only the effort you put in during the SCAP, but for coming back on the two professional development days and helping reevaluate our mission statement and our vision statement and our priorities. I have another SCAP meeting, superintendent's meeting on May first and second to start looking at planning for next year. I'll be taking our administrative team to the summer summit where we are going to plan out next year and what we're doing, that'll be in June. Please let your administrators know if you have any questions, concerns or suggestions. We're hearing that things are kinda coming around to us in backwards ways. Your administration, we really wanna hear from you, if you have any suggestions, if you have concerns, if there's things that you think we could be doing better, Hanover could be doing better, reach out to us, we really wanna hear from you. We are also hiring for several positions, please check our website. We've got several open positions, so if you want to, if you live in Hanover and you don't wanna drive and you don't wanna spend that gas money, hey, we got a job for you. We are currently working with the BOSIs on a para-professional teacher certification. This is gonna include a para-professional trainings. It'll be sanctioned by the Department of Labor as an apprenticeship program. It will also allow our para-professionals to actually get their teaching certificate. Moving on, the SAT, PSAT, we're taking, CMASS is in the middle of finishing up, thanks for all the hard work that's gone into teaching, learning and testing. Ms. Pat and I are finishing the budget for the DAC, and then we will be submitting that to the board at the next board meeting. If you...
Question, question, question.
Yes.
So are you gonna have it ready for the DAC meeting next month?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
And then, so whatever
comments, questions, concerns, if they cause you to make a, want to make a change, you'll be able to flex and make that change in time for the...
Sure.
For me, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that is the plan, I mean, if we need to flex and you get it, yeah, by Friday we should have that. As long as they get us that information back on that Wednesday. Let us know if there's any additions or items that you thought of or you feel we have missed. There is a new agency that is going to be in charge of our preschool. However, we are feeling a little bit better after the meetings, we believe that we might actually see a little bit more money possibly, maybe have some more flexibility there, so we're gonna have to take a look at that. But we, meaning CDE, special education, all of your rural districts especially were really concerned, but we're actually hearing some better things. Having said that, the bill that just passed was five hundred pages long, the longest bill I have ever heard of in the state of Colorado. We're not positive, we were, it's gonna take some time to dig through all of that. Four bikes were given away at PAG, so thank you very much and congratulations to the winners. Field day will be here on the football field on May thirteenth. I dropped a document for the, for the board in my, in six point two regarding attrition. There are some past due balances, there's a lot of balances that are not probably collectible, there's some that are, there's some that are minus, this all goes back to previous years, obviously not this year. And I would encourage the board to look at that, think about that, given the timelines that we're going up from now through November. And think about the plans and take a look at, about half of that is probably kinda, kinda specific, so we might wanna decide what we wanna do with that. Calendar. You guys have a calendar in front of you. And I'm gonna throw this out there, that, within the last day or two, I've been approached by some rural districts who'd like to get together and who would like to call professional, like a regional professional development day four times a year where our teachers will be allowed to attend their school and then be broken up by grade level, so all your first grade teachers from these rural districts will get together, all the second grade teachers, all the social studies teachers, all the math teachers, secondary, junior high, high school. That's not included, those dates are not included on the calendar. When we get to the calendar, if the board wants, thinks that that would be valuable, I think our staff has definitely made that a priority, as you'll see in my presentation for the SCAP and the student grades or the student tests. They made that one of the priorities for the next two years, more professional development, so they can hone their skills, and I've gotta give them a lot of credit and a lot of kudos for that because they felt it was very important. We can talk about how we might make that work when we get there, but that's just for you guys to think about for now. Today, I met at Calham with the BOSIs, our nine districts got together to talk about a co-action grant that's gonna be worth about two million dollars. That is for planning for a CTE pathways and a central BOSIs training program that partners with medical and partners with IT security, heavy machinery, construction, CDL. The goal is that within two years, we've got some pilot sites working while we break down ground on an actual piece of property where contractors and businesses would actually rent space, teach our kids, mentor our kids, internship our kids, and then these kids would get certifications with a pipeline directly, not only summer jobs, but a pipeline directly into the, into the field, I mean, the goal would be, if you're a good student, meaning that you come to school, you, no discipline and you wanna get into this, you could graduate high school with a seventy, eighty thousand dollar a year job. And we, we're gonna use this money to actually make some visits at sites, like Stillwater has got a really good program, Phoenix, we're gonna, all of this is gonna be built into the grant, so we can review what's being done around the country and really Cherry Creek, and really cherry pick what we think is the best for our area, right here. Next item, sorry, this is a long one, guys. There is a new law that was passed last year called the family law, I've actually included a two pager in the board packet as well, I got this today, I dropped it in today, I emailed it to you as well. The board is going to have to vote on this, this is, uh, this is FMLA on the state level. It, uh, it, it, the board's gonna have to decide, A, do we wanna participate, in which case the employees would put in for point four, five percent of their wages, we would put in point four, five percent of their wages. They would get up to twelve weeks of paid leave for similar reasons like the FMLA law, the current federal law where they get it unpaid. We could choose not to participate at all. We could choose to not participate but do employee deductions for their point four, five also. So those decisions are things we're gonna have to decide by the end of the year, actually, probably much sooner than the end of the year because we're gonna have to send a letter. If we opt out, we're gonna have to send a letter, I believe it's to the Secretary of State, it's on there. And then, of course, every eight years, we have to take another vote on that to say, no, we don't wanna participate, or no, we don't wanna participate, but to do a deduction. If we do wanna participate, we don't have to do anything, and then we, it'll just start happening. And we'll have to do the whip over. Just something to keep in mind, I thought it was important, it was being discussed today and I thought you guys needed that.
Well, I mean, that has budget impacts, right?
Yes.
And, um, I would be very, very, very interested to find out what the staff, how the staff feels about it, whether or not they wanna opt in. I mean...
They still have the choice.
No, no.
I don't, right, they don't have to opt in if they don't want to, correct? Everybody's in, right.
Okay. I, I think, I think we find out what the staff wants to do and, you know, have Pat run the numbers on budget impacts if we opt in. I should say, don't opt out. I know there's a lot of things going on, but we should probably be able to get all together by next month.
Yeah. I'll plan that out for you guys. UCCS would like us to have a couple of student teachers for next year, we're gonna be looking to interview them to see if they're a good fit at our elementary schools. They have also agreed to push all of our job postings to all of their graduates, so they're in the process of pushing those to their graduates right now.
They give us for elementary school, not for junior high or high school?
They only have an elementary program.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cause we've got one, one year for junior high.
And, and, well, I guess, I guess it's through sixth grade, right, so technically we could, we would have to see, yeah, sure. I would also like to welcome our new nurse, Peggy Scheffler, she is doing an amazing job, she's being trained right now. She's jumped in with both feet, she's a local here. I was told that she actually did physicals for our girls back when Ms. Brittany was here, she remembered her. So, so she's a local and we're really happy to have her, she's excited about training on the, for the school side, she's been a traveling RN for years, so... Yeah, she was doing sports physicals, yeah. And finally, it's with a sad heart that I want to also say congratulations to those that are retiring, Ms. Pam in preschool, Ms. Susan from fifth grade, and Ms. Dunn, who is our kindergarten teacher. We, uh, we're losing a lot of years of experience, but they have been teaching for a long time. I know some of them wanna come back and do substitute teaching for us, so we're really excited to, to engage them in that, and we wanna say God bless, good luck, stay in touch, and we will miss you. And that's all I have.
Awesome, all right, board, any alibis on comments? Nope. All right, so that brings us to DAC report to the board. Ms. Goggan is on? Oh, all right.
Hi, everybody.
Howdy, howdy.
Uh, so we did not have a DAC meeting this month, as we tried to all be at SCAP. We'll have, we'll play some good reports for you guys next month.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Brings us to a dot one, master plan status, sir. Shannon is on.
Good, okay, Shannon's on, so, yeah, so I guess we're continuing to progress. We'll come away and let you know the graphics of the last thirty plus days in science, that's fine, we'll help them provide to all the update on progress. What we're gonna announce, and I have, is again, page one. Since last board meeting, I've had a couple more around, these questions and answers back and forth between our show, all these work, it's gonna be the district and us, and I realized all the data, all the info, and so that project is on review by the board right now. Schedule for the hearings is May eighteen, nineteen, or the hearings will be eighteen or nineteen. We'll find out, we'll probably, we can have, or we'll explain, one of those two days, eighteen or nineteen. And before it is sort of a follow-up where they may post out what their recommendations are going to be. So we'll do a preview, like, what's supposed to be approved, that's not quite, we don't see, it was all their unapproved, so it's just not, I'm high for we're gonna try to find out, they'll post up, scoring their like, they just have a lot of... It looks like, there's not, the agenda just came out, we know today, that it's gonna be another team's session, so virtual rather than live. We'll get a plan out, and I'm sure it'll just make much difference, you have to say, I'm not buying anything else. That's including all I have for my date, well, that part, that'll turn over to, and Shannon's up, first Shannon, if you can hear us.
Can everyone hear me now?
Gotcha.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Carl, it's a privilege to be here tonight, and I'm wondering how much time do I have, do I have twenty minutes, is that appropriate, or fifteen, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I would...
Cover the subject.
Cover the subject, yes.
Okay, very good, well, I've been busy, I've been collecting a lot of data, we've had an opportunity at the Friday event to survey some of our staff and some others, and so just very quickly, I'd like to run through some of the information that I've collected, and then Jessica will show some of the information that she has obtained associated with predominantly the elementary school, and I'll just kinda try to run through this as quickly as possible. So from an enrollment standpoint, as many of you know, we have grown during the last four years, this table shows how we've grown all the way up to about two hundred and eighty-three from about two hundred and forty some odd, so we seem to be on a ten new students a year kind of a pace, so that's pretty significant for a district of our size. And if that continues, I think the team agrees that we will be in trouble at the elementary school. Just given the overall level of intensity in that building. If we continue to grow at this rate, we could potentially go from being a one section per grade level school district to being a two section per grade level school district, and that could have some consequences for us, so, uh, very important that we look at what's happening to us. If you look at the next slide, you will see some of the indicators that I look at, we seem to be in a baby boom. So back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we were having roughly seventeen to twenty new babies born whose moms physically resided in Hanover School District. And as of twenty twenty-one, according to provisional data from the Colorado Department of Health, we hit sixty-seven. And it didn't just happen overnight, we had a slow, a dozen more babies per year kind of ascent, and those babies have grown into the system during the period where they're in preschool, and we can't see them in our student databases, so they are, they're out there lurking, so to speak, and this big bump, or this big baby boom will be hitting us in the next year or so. If, if the statistics are real, and again, this is just one indicator, but I think we're hearing some other anecdotes, because our community... Our community is, um, is affordable, about two thirds of our housing stock is, uh. Um, modular or mobile in a lot of cases, and so. Um, that is the housing category, the housing that looks like the homes that are in Hanover School District. Is the leading child producing housing type in the state of Colorado right now. So in almost every district that I work in. The student yield rates for, um, a non-stick-built, single-family homes is. Point one or point two higher than what it is for stick-built homes. So, um, that is a really significant thing that could be coming at us. Um. From an import and export of students, we continue to import a dozen and export a little over a hundred. There are a variety of reasons why this happens in a lot of smaller school districts adjacent to big metropolitan areas. Um, parents, uh, take their children to work with them. And that's been something that has, um, accelerated during the pandemic. That's more happening because parents are so nervous and so. Concerned about the world, there's so much to worry about now and having your child. Two or three miles away at a school close to your workplace versus fifteen miles back down the road where I live. Um, uh, can be a little bit more comforting to have them close by. Also, a lot of people perceive. Uh, big towns and big districts as having, um, more to offer from a budgetary and educational standpoint. And in a lot of cases, that can be true and some families want to take advantage of that. But you can see Fountain gets about forty, forty of our students and then Widefield gets about twenty. And then, uh, a couple of districts get a dozen, so District Forty-nine gets twelve. And, um, you're looking at Harrison Two gets about nine. Um, so, um, a lot of those may be specialized curriculums that are STEM or fine arts or language programs. Uh, we just, uh, don't know exactly why those individuals went. From a housing standpoint, this next graphic shows, we've had some housing booms over the years, so this shows. The number of new homes that came online during a specific year. Based on year built in the county assessors records. So, starting in about twenty fourteen, we're in another boom. So you can see that, uh, from twenty fourteen to about twenty twenty, we're looking at, um, another bump where we're having a lot of new housing come online. And, um, I was seeing that in the community last time I was there, that there were a lot of, uh, new properties being developed. And, um, I think that that is, um, something that will be, um, affecting our enrollment. Um. Moving on to the next slide, housing by type, you can see this is kind of what my introductory comments were. You can see. Tri-level, two-story, unspecified house type, split level and ranches. Uh, comprised about a third of our housing stock and then the mobile or modular category. Is, um, the lion's share of the, um, housing stock in our community. And, um, this is again, based on, uh, the, uh, El Paso County Assessors data. Uh, where they identify what type of home is on a specific lot. Um. So again, we have the housing type that families want. As housing prices have ascended in Colorado, we have seen a large-scale migration. Of families in the age category that have young children gravitating toward. Mobile and modular housing because of its affordability. And, um, I think we're seeing part of that, um, trend where. Families just can't afford these six and eight hundred thousand dollar houses, which is what you're seeing. In, uh, standard, uh, big subdivisions and so they're looking for another. Uh, environment where they can afford to own their own home as opposed to renting a home. Uh, the next slide shows, uh. Uh, oh Fountain and Colorado Springs creeping toward us. Um, I did poll Fountain. They don't have any plans to annex into Hanover beyond the International Raceway in the foreseeable future. Uh, Colorado Springs, I'm still polling them. Obviously, we've got, uh, banning Lewis Ranch and, um. Of Vanta, I guess the La Plata Communities Development, um. I'm, uh, working with them. I work with them in other school districts and they're helping me understand the extent to which they could annex into our district. And develop suburban, suburban homes south of the green line that you see there. And on this graphic, you're seeing an aerial photograph with the district identified by that green polygon. And you see the elementary over to the, um. Southwest of the, uh, International Raceway and then you see Hanover Junior, Senior. Uh, kind of in the middle of the big box. That really identifies the geographic separation of our schools. Which is an issue if you perform services at both buildings. Uh, uh, the mileage and the drive time is pretty significant and it tends to, uh, create, um, some human resources. And service delivery challenges for our operational and some instructional staff because of how we're separated. Um, I addressed that in the survey and I'll talk about it in just a second. Uh, the next slide shows, um. Some of this FCI stuff that, uh, we have been exploring as far as the condition of our buildings. Um, FCI is kind of hard to understand. But it's a ranking from zero to one and zero is good. And one is bad. So, um, when you look at an FCI and a, and a, um, fraction, keep in mind, one is bad and zero is good. So closer to zero you are. On that one-point scale, um, the better the building. Um, so on the next slide, you'll see the, um, elementary school ranking. And you can see the main building gets a point five oh, which is. Kind of, um, I don't know what that would be from a letter grade standpoint, maybe a C minus, but it's, uh. Right in the middle of that ranking schedule and then the modulators. Have significantly low ratings, so they are rated modular one is point eight one. Then it goes point nine three, point six oh, point seven one. So according to the rating schedule from the CDE. Um, FCI Facility Condition Index, uh, measuring tape, um. They give our main building a low building, a low rating and our portables an even lower rating at the elementary school. This is Prairie Heights that we're talking about. The site actually gets a pretty good rating, probably mostly because of its size. Um. And, um, so that really indicates that there are opportunities to, uh, continue working with that size. Again, closer to zero is a better score. So the site at Prairie Heights gets a better score than the building at Prairie Heights. Uh, the next building shows, um, uh, the Junior Senior High School and, um. They did not do a ranking or an FCI, I don't think, for the. Original school for the, um, uh, the Ed Center and the boardroom is, so, um. I don't think we have FCI data for that building, but they give. The Junior Senior High a point two four and again, close to zero is better, so. The, uh, according to the CDE ratings, the Junior Senior High is twice as good as the elementary. Now, obviously, classroom size is one of the reasons why the elementary gets a fairly low rating. We've got a bunch of seven hundred square foot classrooms and, um. I've been building schools all over the state for forty years and we try not to drop below about eight seventy-five for an elementary school classroom. And some kindergartens that get built are all the way up around eleven hundred. And I get a big smile on my face anytime an elementary school classroom is over nine hundred square feet, which is, uh. What I like to see, nine twenty-five, nine fifty, nine seventy-five really gives, um, kids a little bit of elbow room. Uh, the site gets a very, very good rating, almost a perfect score, um, of point oh three, so, um, the site got a really high rating. Uh, let's see, moving on to the next slide, um. We did do a survey at our, um, staff event on, uh, Friday. Uh, these were the questions, um. I will run through the results of these just very quickly so that we save time to talk about, um, some school facility, uh, specifics. Um, but as far as the role in the district, let's go ahead and go to the next slide, uh, Carl, we're looking at, uh. Oh, about more than half the people were, um, uh, staff and, um, uh, a lot of people had multiple roles. They teach here, their parents here. Um, et cetera, but we had, uh, forty-one percent of the people were teachers. Seventeen percent are, were parents or guardians. So I think we had a lot of the people. That are responsible for delivering education in this district present, um, at our Friday event. Uh, the next slide shows. Um, what level are they most involved in, concerned with, and it was, um. Pretty even across the board, elementary, middle, high school, several levels. Um, so I think we had a broad representation. Not much representation from the preschool, uh, component of our staff, so, uh, most of these folks were, um, uh. K through twelve folks, not so many preschool kid, uh, preschool, um, uh, adults or leaders, if you will. Uh, the next slide shows, um, opinion on are we growing at the preschool level? Well, we didn't have a lot of preschool folks in the group. So they were kind of split fifty-eight, forty-two. As far as are we growing from a preschool standpoint, just because we didn't seem to have. A lot of those people that would observe that trend, um, present in the group. Uh, the next slide shows, um. How do people feel about Prairie Heights? What are they thinking about elementary school growth? And about eighty percent of the people that were involved in the Friday event said, we have more students. At the elementary level and the building is crowded. Uh, seventeen percent said same as before, three percent said fewer. Uh, next slide, um. Opinion on are we growing? Are there more families here than there have been in the past? Eighty-five percent of people said yes, that there are more families here than there have been in the past. About fifteen percent said no, about the same. Uh, let's see, the last question, um, go to the next slide. Uh, thank you so much. Um, so why do those hundred and six or hundred and ten people that leave us every year? Uh, go to school elsewhere, predominantly in Colorado Springs. Seventy-two percent said they had a parent that worked there, uh, seventy-eight percent said they were going for some sort of specialized curriculum. Fifty-four percent said before and after childcare was available at the school they were in. Sixty-one percent said there was some sort of an activity or after-school, um, opportunity that they were taking advantage of, dance programs, sports. Church programs and then twenty-two percent said other. A lot of the folks that addressed this said that the, uh, families that they knew that left the district to go to school in Colorado Springs. Had maybe two or three different reasons why they were, um, making that decision. Uh, let's see, the next slide, um. Here are just some anecdotes as far as what people wrote in as an answer. I just stopped it there and this is. Quoted verbatim, so, um. There's no attempt there to, uh, moderate what people actually, uh, or filter what people had to say. Uh, let's see, next slide, um. Uh, so basically. I think the people that were involved in the Friday event feel that we are growing, there are more families around, the elementary school is crowded. And, um, I also think that, um. They're pretty unified in identifying that the reason that, uh, families may, um, may leave the Hanover School District and go to a. A Colorado Springs School District for school are kind of those four leading reasons. They take their, their child to work. Um, and drop them at a close by school on their way. They want to be in a bigger school with a, maybe a unique curriculum that they can't get in Hanover. Um, and then a variety of other childcare and after-school activity reasons. Um. I have to say that that was kind of what I was expecting because those are the, some of the perspectives. Uh, that I have seen and I would say that the majority of the people that were involved in the Friday. Event will rec, represent the core. Of, uh, the leadership of our, um, organization, so I think their perspective is extremely valuable. So that's the end of my, uh, slides. What I would like to do at this point is, um, transition. Uh, to Jessica and we can talk about the, um, school, uh, specific school, uh, deficiencies and conditions. And then we'll follow up with questions.
Okay, can you all hear me now?
Gotcha.
Great. So we spent some time looking, um, further at the elementary school. We've, um. Toward the buildings and seen both buildings and then, um, we had some of this information from Shannon and advanced, so. Um, attached is, yeah, colored floor plan that we put together on the elementary school and as Shannon mentioned before, one of the first things you'll notice is that our elementary school classrooms. Are around seven hundred and seventy square feet, seven hundred and sixty square feet. Um, and then you'll, as you all know, the building also is comprised of the four portables, so we can't, um, contain all of the current curriculum in the building itself. And as Shannon mentioned, those portables have some pretty low scores in terms of condition scores and we also, um, saw that when we came out on site. So if you want to go to the next slide. Um. So if you can zoom in on the numbers here, the state of Colorado has, um, recommendations per the CDE for how many square feet we should have. Um, per number of students. So up at the top there, um, is what they recommend in terms of total gross square footage for the building. So if you had a hundred students. Uh, they recommend a hundred and fifty-one square feet per pupil, which gets you to a total gross square footage of fifteen thousand sixty-four. Uh, and our current building, um, just the building itself, about the portables is twelve thousand six hundred square feet approximately. With the p, portables, we get up to around sixteen, okay? But currently we have more than a hundred students, um, so we took a look at a hundred and twenty and what the CD would recommend and that gets up to seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty. Um, so if we're serving a hundred and twenty students and we only have sixteen thousand square feet, we're already under, under. And then as Shannon mentioned, um, there's a baby boom, um, and so how we would continue to accommodate, you know, more students, ten per year. Or more as the demographic information shows. Um, so it does show that this school is undersized overall. And then down below, we looked at individual classroom sizes. So, um, on the bottom left, you can see for kindergartners, they recommend thirty-eight square feet per pupil. Um, and then it gets less, um, as they get older. Um, and our current kindergarten, so, uh, you know, a thirty, uh, student kindergarten classroom, uh, they would recommend one thousand one hundred and forty. Or Shannon mentioned before, a lot of times you see the kindergarten classrooms at a thousand square feet with twenty-eight students. Um, and we're working with something like seven hundred and sixty-five square feet currently. And then, you know, it's the same for grade one through five, um. The TD would recommend nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty square foot, nine hundred and sixty square foot classrooms. Um, and again, um, some of our classrooms have, uh, at the elementary school, you have twenty-eight students and seven hundred and sixty-five square feet, which is. Under what the CD guidelines and recommendations, um, would recommend. So, um, we just wanted to share that tonight, you know, with just, just our current data, um, you know, some of you who teach at the elementary school level may currently feel. Um, tight in your classrooms or may feel it is tight and, um, per the CD recommendations that, that backs it up. Um, and the data does show that, that the elementary school has some undersized classrooms and an undersized building as a whole.
Interesting.
So I, I guess at this point, um, Shannon and I would open it up. Um, what questions do you have about what you, we've covered this evening?
So I'm an engineer, right? And I look at these numbers and I see the. Diagram of the school and it makes me want to solve a problem. So it's obvious that. Based on our current projections, we've got to add classrooms at the bare minimum. Um, but adding classes, is there a way to potentially reconfigure? The existing classrooms, adding square footage, in other words, are those load-bearing walls?
Yeah, so that, that'll be in our next steps of what we do moving forward. Um, it's starting to look at, we'll, we'll do this analysis that we did for the elementary school also on the junior senior high, just to make sure we're confirming things over there as well. Um, and then we'll start to look at those questions of how could we reconfigure the building? Or add on to the building or change the building, um, to make that work and to try to meet some of these CD recommended sizes for the district. Um, so that's what we'll be working on moving forward. Um, so we'll come back to you with more options and look at different options of how we might do that in the future. Um, so we'll come back to you with more options and look at different options of how we might do that in the future.
I I had the same reaction to that. Uh, Jessica, if you could go back to the floor plan where we've got these two rows of three classrooms. And I guess what the 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 gentleman just observed, um, you know, the idea of making three into two. And three into two um would create appropriate sized elementary school classrooms. Um, so you know, that's kind of, if that were easily obtainable, that would be as long along with. Additional permanent capacity at this school, that would be a good way to. Make this building work better would be to take the fourth grade, the fifth grade. The third grade, the fourth grade and the fifth grade, make that two classrooms. And the second grade, the first grade and the kindergarten and make that two classrooms and then add more space that would be appropriately sized. Now again, um, the load-bearing wall question is extremely relevant.
Yeah, so the the walls around the gymnasium and cafeteria, we assume at this point are load-bearing, but it does not look like the partition walls between classrooms are. Um, so we'll have some flexibility there.
So I I have a question. I'm just wondering, so if we were to, let's say, remodel and. Use those, combine those spaces together, would that really be considered a permanent fix or would that be more putting on a Band-Aid? To then later down the road, might solve the problem for now, but like a lot of districts. Would just build a new s- a new high school and then eventually the current high school will become. That grade school, I I don't know, just throw that out there. How long would off these projections? How long would that be sustainable and? What we're looking for until we outgrow it again?
I'll have those answers for you at a subsequent meeting, but I think. The quality of the elementary school facility itself is extremely high. There's just not enough of it. So we would need to place another building envelope, the size of the one that you see on your screen. Down next to it, if we were going to work exclusively on the Prairie Heights site. And um, just solve the problem there at the existing location. But if we could convert some of these um rooms into appropriately sized classrooms, obviously we have to replace. What we're um consuming, so we would need to build um more new space and and again. Um, ending the use of portable classrooms would be desirable uh for a variety of reasons. Um, but we would need to build some new space. Um, these kind of moves, I think, would be creating assets that would have. Extremely long lives, meaning twenty, thirty, forty-year lives. Eventually Colorado Springs will gobble us up. I just got confirmation about five minutes ago that Amara. Is not annexing in Hanover School District yet. Um, so um, we're looking at banning Lewis Ranch and Amara stopping just short of the district boundary. But that's not to say that in ten years they may not continue to uh gobble up vacant land as Colorado Springs. Metropolitan area continues to grow. But for the the typical capital bond cycle. I think um, I'm beginning to believe and will have a confirmed opinion in a couple of weeks. That we're not going to look at a huge land development situation, but what we do have. Is an existing condition that is a constraint and we have a growing. Home population in this modular and mobile category and more families purchasing those homes on the resale market. That have young families because it is such an attractive, affordable option if you do have school-aged children. And I think that's the growth dynamic that has the most chance of pushing us over. The one classroom per grade level threshold where we start having some blowups where we have to have two kindergartens and then two first grades. And then two second grades and um. Um, we can't continue to add portables to accommodate um that kind of a situation.
I I do have a question, Mr. Bingham. Talking about your portion of the beef brief with the uh survey, uh was the preponderance of that survey taken during the Friday S cap? Or were you sending out surveys other than?
It was all the Friday S cap and I wanted to have more interaction with the board and the superintendent before I generate a broader survey. And when a survey goes out, you'll know about it. You'll know what the questions are and you'll know when it goes on the street and when and who has it.
Right, I I was at that S cap brief, but I was one of the ones that took that survey. Uh, very, very few community members uh that weren't teachers or staff. Uh, so I don't know how accurate of a representation that survey really is. Uh, if you talk about expanding out past this district.
We had access to those folks for that one day and we decided we would, we would seize the opportunity to survey them while they were in the room. And um, so that's what we did and um, we will have a broader survey um going out uh very quickly. That will ask many of the same questions and maybe a few more as you see fit.
Anyone else have any questions? So talk to us about timeline.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Now the mic's on, that's why. So Shannon, I just was asking a question if if you had a particular uh timeline in mind for. Uh, next intermediate step and then sort of a target for completion and Jessica, the same, same for you after Shannon responds.
Well, I think we're looking at spooling up for a broader community survey over the course of the next uh two weeks and I think uh. We would like to have uh some scenarios. Um, I've already got some in mind and then we'd like to um. Work with the superintendent and the board to see if you would like to um. Designate a little capital facilities committee to review what we have or do you want to be that body yourself? And so um, when you can give us that uh response, um, I'll have a meeting schedule that will be. Um, concentrated into those first three weeks in May if Jessica's information um. Is where we need it to be um in time to have scenarios in front of you that are feasible. So the gentleman that asked the load-bearing walls question, there there are some other factors there such as HVAC. Um, would it be cost prohibitive to s- to sub- to subdivide those rooms? We we have a few questions there that. Are going to require M O A to do a little bit more research, but I'm ready to start generating scenarios. And if you have a group of people that I can convene, I'm ready to start working with them. I'd like to be. Uh, through this cycle by the end of May because um, I I want you to have some results prior to the um end of the school year.
So yes, we'll be working on scenarios starting next week on uh the elementary school and then we'll be doing the analysis that we did at the elementary school. On the junior senior high. Um, so if we're able to get a group together in early May, we'd be able to. Start showing some options and getting some feedback.
That's good. And then that all aligns, of course, with the phase one hearings uh toward the middle of May and by the end of May we'll. Have a very good idea on where we stand with the uh, what's that? Can you hear me? Yeah, so by, again, I was saying by the end of May, we'll have a good idea on where we stand with the phase one. Uh, best grant request, which just sort of takes some of the uh improvements that are already planned. Out of the need for discussion uh for funding in the in the next cycle, so um, I think it's all coming together. Towards the end of May and uh we'll be in good shape then to build on for a campaign to. Get with the community and work towards that November bond plan.
They want to get with these some people here.
Yeah, or us.
Yeah, do you want to be the committee or do you want to designate a committee?
I don't know if this whole board has time for it, but I would love to.
So, what are your thoughts, CJ?
I'll second that. I'd love to uh donate whatever time I can.
And I'm thinking, you know, ops and maintenance uh people. Someone from that department should be part of that process. So I I'm lobbying for forming a committee. But at the same time. I'm not saying. All four of us can't show, or five of us can't show up to that committee. But I I want to include those people, if we find anyone in the community that wants to engage. Um, anyone in the staff.
Yeah, definitely.
Like anybody wants to engage.
Especially the people at the elementary that is going to be impacting on a day, you know, day-to-day.
That's what I was getting ready to say. I think that would be a smart choice right there.
Well, so I I think what I want to do is, and I don't know. How, Paul, I'm sorry, Paul, what are your thoughts on this?
No, I like the idea of a committee and I would agree. Uh, I well, I also feel that. Also a- as a board. We do a lot of voting on really everything. Um, so I I think it would be great for. A committee to come to a consensus, but also with some involvement and uh. You know, some interaction with the board is what I've been.
So what I'm go- I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was just gonna say it'd be a good time for everybody to. Work together.
So what I'm gonna propose is that, um. It's hard to do because we don't have anything on the agenda to vote on stuff. But um, I don't think anyone on the board, sir, would be upset if you took the initiative to put a call out to form a committee. Um, to respond to uh input, requested inputs in the master plan.
Um. Yeah, I'm 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 happy to do that. Shannon, how much time are we talking? How many meetings? How much time? What do you, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I was working with Johnstown Millikins Board tonight, um, and I was recommending um six two-hour meetings. I think we could do this in three or four two-hour meetings. And I also think that if the board were more comfortable with a Saturday morning. Work session or however you structure your work, um, that could be an option as well. Um, I um. Have a pretty open schedule right now. Um, I like a midweek two-hour meeting and I think that. Uh, the first, second and third Wednesdays of May might be a a pretty decent option if Jessica could be ready. In that timeframe um to have uh three two-hour meetings and. Look at the conditions and the data on the first one, look at some scenarios on the second one. And see if we can arrive at a consensus and a set of recommendations for the board at the third one. And then if we have a solid board composition on the committee. You would be walking away from that process, knowing most of what you need to know. To ask further questions and decide what you want to do as a board. And then this would coincide with the um, I guess the best meeting will also give you some. Um, idea of some other issues that you might have on your plate uh regarding condition issues at the junior senior high. So that would probably be pretty good timing by that uh end of that third week of May for us to do three two-hour meetings. And then see where we stand.
All right, um, I can certainly put out the word to staff and the DAC. Do you have board members and the DAC? I'm sure can reach out to the community. Do you have board members to reach out to the community, community as well? Yeah, request some uh.
Three, yeah.
Or some people that want to participate and get them in touch.
Well, I think we should do maybe a easy blast and website.
Yeah, we we can do that, yeah, of course.
Well, and then before we set dates, uh just Jessica, I think you've got probably the biggest uh task. So we want to make sure you've got enough time to prepare and be ready for. You know, whatever the first meeting if need be and so we have to work that through your schedule for sure.
Yeah, and I have staffing available so I can meet um whatever schedule we're available to meet here in May.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Jessica's good with it, yeah. They've got the biggest lift right now. Shannon's, I think, um, mostly his stuff done, but. Just listening to Jessica, so she's got it covered. So those dates work, we can move forward with that as a, as a plan.
Uh, do you guys want to set those, those times on Wednesdays right now?
Was it Wednesday or Thursday?
You want Thursdays?
I don't know what Shannon, does the day of the week matter to you, Wednesday or Thursday or?
Mid- midweek is always better for me, um, but Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday would work. If you wanted to do. Uh, three Thursdays in a row through May, I think that would probably work for me.
During Tuesdays here, so whatever dates work for you guys is good, yeah.
Can you guys do Tuesdays? What time works for you guys?
Uh, if I could interject, if you're trying to get parents and teachers to participate, six to eight seems to be the magic um zone of uh. The best time for this kind of a committee to meet as far as people being able to get home from work. Uh, if they have to feed kids, so sometimes.
And we can provide dinner. Or four-thirty to six-thirty.
I'm okay with four-thirty or six-thirty.
Oh, yeah, so that's.
Right. I'm in here at five, so. And CJ's in at five.
Are we doing it here, elementary?
Five-thirty, seven-thirty.
If we do it over there, you gotta give us half an hour to get there.
Five-thirty, seven-thirty.
Five-thirty, seven-thirty.
Yeah, I'm not sure the location makes a big difference unless you're.
Want to make sure we can hook up and talk to it.
Switch off and do one meeting at each facility?
It would be nice to walk the buildings a little bit in conjunction with the meetings quickly.
Good. We want to accommodate them off the.
What, why don't we do one here, one there and then? I don't care where the third one is.
Well, about one junior, senior, one at Prairie Heights, third one here.
Right here.
Okay.
Meet's gonna happen, I think, in the third one.
Yeah.
Let's do the one at Prairie Heights first because I think that's going to be the line here at this conversation.
After that, we may want to do another one there. I think we should just like.
Five-thirty, okay with TV show over there?
Yeah, TBD on location.
Five-thirty at Prairie Heights.
So May third?
Change it, Jody.
It's a week after next.
Change your birthday.
And then May tenth is the DAC meeting, so you guys will have to work around that and then May seventeenth. Yep. So May third, tenth and the seventeenth from five-thirty.
Do we want to reschedule it because of the DAC meeting or are they going?
Well, the DAC hopefully is going to be a part of this.
Yeah.
Well, and I just, uh, Chelsea just asked if we wanted the DAC to be involved. I said yes, so.
Yes.
So maybe what we do is.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. I thought the DAC was.
Um.
They're gonna have their meeting right afterwards. It's gonna be over here that day, so. Yeah, I'm starting.
P H E there.
That way we walk through and see everything.
Right, so what we could do is potentially. Beggingly ask Chelsea if the DAC could start at five. And then have an abbreviated meeting and then do this community meeting at five-thirty.
On the seventeenth, on the third?
On the DAC meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's the third meeting. I mean, uh, let's get the first two out of the way and then they can.
That's the second, you said it was the tenth.
We don't have to do the same day of the week every time. If you want to do a different day um for the DAC. Um, I would be open to that if others are, if you want to do um a a Wednesday night meeting or something to that effect. We don't have to have exactly seven days between the meetings.
Tuesdays are good. Tuesdays are good. Those three Tuesdays. DAC can work around it. We'll figure a way.
All right, so the first meeting will be May third from five thirty to seven thirty at PHE. We'll get an easy blast out. We'll get it posted on the website. I've got board members and the DAC are going to recruit some people. We'll try to get a list of names. I don't think we need to limit the number. I think the more, the better. We facilitate it and we just get voices in the room.
Yeah, I mean, as long as Shannon can herd the cats, sure.
Not more than a classroom full of people. I'm, I can teach one classroom worth, so not more than a classroom worth of people.
Okay, got you.
Well, and if we do it at PHE, we already know the classrooms are small, so.
And Jenna? Master plan?
This.
Master plan.
Uh.
Do you want to get some community input or master plan?
What the?
Master plan, community committee meeting.
Planning committee. Yeah, planning.
Master planning committee meeting, something like that.
Yeah.
Master planning committee meeting. Sounds very.
MPCM. It's the MPCM meeting.
All right. We'll get on that. It'll go out tomorrow.
Hold on.
Okay.
We will, we will work on uh, wording in the morning.
Uh, Mar. Anything else on master plan? Okay.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brings us to eight dot two policy, J N, community service first read. Get a burrito, Carl, on your way. So master plan. Um, sorry, J and community service. That is the community service that's required for graduation.
That's actually a separate. It it's not graduation. This is uh, for to do community service to get a certificate awarded.
It goes with your trans.
This is right. Over what?
It used to be required for graduation, right?
Out, but we want to put it back in.
Okay.
So that'll come. We'll talk about that later. For some reason, it's not in the current when we redid it, but we want it to go back.
Okay.
Right now, they don't have that community service.
To graduate.
But adding it requires it? Or is it just like an option? If they do it, they go.
This is special. Yeah, this is a special.
And so what we did here was we picked um, who is um, in charge of it and how many hours to get the certificate.
Correct, and they can't do it by anything that involves the school. It has to be done outside of the school and they can't.
No, no, it can still be school. If me as a coach.
Right here.
Yeah, well, yeah, me as a coach, I can bring a high schooler in and have him help teach the other students. He's not getting paid. Okay, and it's not school activity. It's actually extracurricular activity. They can get community hours that way.
But we didn't need to update it because right here it says um, community service recognition will not be available for any activities which a student received compensation or for those performed within the school in which the student is involved. Um, so we need to update that.
So they could do it like high school could do it for Prairie Heights.
High school could do it for junior high. And so it was already.
Technically.
Yeah, why not? Why not? That was already approved. I don't know why we can't.
That would be.
Well, the language of it is a little.
Well, let's correct the.
Non-specific.
Yeah, let's correct the language.
So Mr. Superintendent, when you bring this forward to make this part of graduation, tweak that language too.
We can do that. My, my, my question for this is, do you want it to be a hundred hours? Uh, we have it.
Sixty.
Maybe I'm wrong. It was twenty-five a year for four years. It was fifteen a year for four years. So it was sixty hours. So this would be like a bonus over and above at a hundred.
We had a lot of kids did that. Couple years ago, there was ones that's getting three hundred hours.
So, so does the board want this, them to be able to do the work at the school? Yeah, I I don't know why it would be an issue necessarily.
I don't see why either, as long as it's not for their own teacher.
Or like, like I look at it this way. So if I'm a football player right at the high school, I shouldn't be able to volunteer extra hours for the football team and and have account for that because it directly benefits me, right?
No, that's, I agree with you there. No, what I'm talking about is this. I take two high school wrestlers.
Right.
They come down and they help teach middle school.
Wrestling.
Junior high wrestlers, helps teach them football players. I take two football players when they have nothing going on. They come in and they help teach the junior high football players. On their own time. It's not during their practice.
And it doesn't directly benefit them.
And it does benefit them whatsoever.
Paul, you unmuted. You have thoughts?
No, I was gonna say, I think it kind of made it, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Swayze already said that when he said high school, the junior high, junior high, high schools were.
Right, I just think the language that we have in there now is not specific enough because it's one building. So a lot of people are gonna look at that and think that's one school.
Um, also, I don't know if this counts, but this year at concessions, a kid was like, I'm working, I'm getting my community service through concessions. Um, I sort of have mixed feelings on that one. I mean, I understand that, but also concessions should go towards like a senior trip or senior fund or, you know, towards prom or like the juniors with fundraising for prom. Like, I know the juniors this year didn't have any money for the prom. Like, we need to be able to give these opportunities. So I think that maybe that.
We try. The kids you're talking about, they weren't juniors, so they weren't getting the money for the prom and then they were working there.
But, but I look at it.
Though, like even if they're not a junior?
Has to be approved by their sponsor. Their sponsor's supposed to come and register and be in there. Just like if I take my football player, I have to be in there with the concessions. I have to be in there. School, the s- the class sponsor is supposed to be in there also. That's always been, always been. Always.
So are we gonna allow them to get community service hours, student sessions? I guess that's.
I would say no.
I would say no.
I would say, I would say it depends on if they're benefiting. If they're not benefiting and they're helping out.
Sponsors in with them when they're doing.
I, I know that we've had students from time to time that have helped because we needed help. And for that, and they, they weren't compensated.
That's.
That, that to me is a different thing that we, we just need to.
We want to talk to him, Jody. Sir, what do you have? True.
Again, maybe.
I.
Yeah, I agree.
I wouldn't be opposed to just removing that clause.
For what school they're in?
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna do community service for the school, I mean, if they're pulling weeds, if they're mowing the lawn, I, whatever, I, you know, I, I don't know.
We should leave the compensation piece in.
I agree.
But change the, and the student can't do it for where they're.
Or maybe even just a parenthetical, right, that uh, in, in this, in this definition of school, junior, senior, high school are considered two schools.
Or say, you know, um, student, uh, any community service signed off by a administrator is allowed within school.
So was the idea behind that, that you didn't want them just showing up in class after school and then the?
I don't know.
Someone just signed off.
Before I was on the board, right?
It's a sample policy promotes it.
They couldn't just walk into a classroom with their favorite teacher.
And then get a sign. Yeah, yeah.
It was, they, they had to, you know.
So let, uh, let's just do the delineating. The school is for the junior means ju- junior high or senior.
Yeah, we have other ways of doing it. They can go to the community pantry. She always needs help. TJ's been looking for some muscle to help around his ranch.
We got Hanover days, we have bike races.
We have a Hanover days out here. They can all volunteer. Um, there's all the church. There's always things. Yeah, I imagine Carl could use some kits to clean up around the firehouse.
That's another good point. Great point.
So are we all in agreeance on the, the hundred? I mean, I like, like you guys brought, you guys brought it up. It used to always be sixty.
So I think, I think sixty for graduation, a hundred for the bonus recognition certificate.
And that's how it used to be.
Yeah, that sounds great.
I like it.
So this is completely separate. So this was, this is a completely separate certificate.
Yes.
All right, anything else on J N? All right, that brings us to S cap test scores presentation. Mr. Superintendent, sir.
Miss Lord. So we're gonna talk about our uh, school, student, school review and our data uh, today. Next slide. So I, I gave part of this uh, uh, presentation to the uh, uh, S cap committee when they showed up, and I think it's important to know who we are as a district. Uh, we have two hundred and eighty-four students pre K through twelve, one hundred and twenty-seven of those students reside at Prairie Heights, one hundred and fifty-seven at the Hanover Junior Senior High School. If you take a look at our graduation rates, uh, we have a hundred percent graduation in seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty. We're at sixty-six point seven uh, in twenty twenty-one. However, if you were to have looked at two thousand eighteen nineteen last year, we would have been at eighty percent. So one of the nice things that it shows is we don't give up on our students. If they don't make it in four, we're still with them in year five. We're still with them in year six, trying to make sure that they have achieved their graduation rate and so that we actually bring them up to that. Um, we've got some challenges in our district. Uh, if you take a look at what percentile we're in uh, for mobility, we rank twentieth in the state for mobility. Uh, for special education out of a hundred and seventy-nine uh, districts, we are twelfth in the state. Uh, for ELL, we are forty-second in the state at a seventy-six percentile. For free and reduced lunch, we're in the eighty-seventh percentile, uh, number twenty-two in the state. And for homeless students, we are in the ninety-sixth percentile, seventh in the state. When you look at the challenge, I have to tell you, I spent two days crunching numbers from C D E. These are taken directly from the C D E website. And our students have challenges. This shows the kind of challenges they are, and it made me reframe what it means to support students in the Hanover School District. We need to make sure that we are aware that there may be causes. There may be reasons why students aren't here or they come to school tired or they come to school with work not done. And it's up to us to try to help them meet those needs. To that end, I know that uh, we are looking to add washers and dryers to kind of help out with our, with our families so that they can bring clothes to school if, if need be. Um, obviously, we have facilities if, if families need to come and we're gonna be reaching out and we have our our family advocates that are, that are reaching out to our, our families to let them know that we're here for them and we're here to support them. Oh, we've seen continuous growth of mobility uh, since two thousand thirteen when we were at eight point nine percent. Uh, we have sixty-eight percent that qualify for free and reduced lunch, fifty-seven percent at Prairie Heights, seventy-two at the junior senior high school, and twenty-three percent of the population uh, is considered minority in one way, shape or form. Uh, so what, what have we done? These are our Dibbles data, and if you take a look at our middle of the year versus when those tests were held, which would have been the end of March, uh, maybe the middle of March, uh, you can see where our students have, have moved. Uh, so if you, if it, to interpret these numbers for kindergarten, first, second, third grade, um, red is, is low and then the next level is yellow. Green is about where we expect students to be, and then blues are your overachievers. Those are the ones that are going up. You can see that we are continuously moving students out of the red and, and, and trying to move them up higher and higher. Um, next slide. Uh, these are our uh, student growth numbers. What? These are our student growth numbers. No, I think you rolled through. We're back to the high school. There we go. We're, these are our student growth numbers for math, this first slide uh, in Prairie Heights. We had an issue with third grade that didn't track for the first testing, so we don't have growth numbers for them. Um, what you're looking at there is the observed growth in blue. Uh, the grade level projected norms, uh, growth would be in the triangle. So you're wanting that blue to be in over that tr- over that diamond and exceed up. And, and we see that we have some challenges here, right? We're not seeing the growth that we needed to. So we made some changes after this test. I'm hopeful that by the next, if not the next board meeting in May, by June, I will have some new results to see where we were, where we went. Uh, either from winter to uh, to spring or from even fall to spring. Uh, the next slide shows our language arts reading. And you can see, you know, second grade is there, fifth grade is just on the cusp of getting there. Um, still need to do some work in first and fourth. Next slide. Um, these are the uh, RIT scores that we see uh, for our junior, senior high school students. Um, you can see what the, these are more achievement scores, what the national average is, what the math and reading are in the spring, um, what the class is next to those, and we know that we have some, some uh, some challenges there as well. If you take a look at the scores that are in colors of green and red, we didn't see the, the colors we wanted to see that are red. Uh, the green would be the scores in math and reading uh, that, that we would hope to see. Uh, this uh, six to seventh was from last year to this year, following the same cohort. Next slide. Uh, and then we go back to that growth summary for the junior, senior high school. You can see that in math, we're, we're just barely capturing math. Uh, the next slide. For uh, reading, we still have a little bit of work to do there. Uh, next slide. And then language usage, we're capturing some of it, obviously, but, and we didn't have scores for, for eighth grade. And I think there's some reasons for that. Next slide. So when the S cap came, the S cap group from four different school districts came in and they broke up and they observed class, every classroom at Prairie Heights, they observed every classroom at the junior, senior high school. Class, every classroom at Prairie Heights, they observed every classroom at the Junior Senior High School. They uh, interviewed uh, staff, they interviewed parents, they interviewed students. Um, they, they looked at our survey results. Um, they looked at how instruction was being delivered in the classroom. And they developed a, a uh. A summary of what they felt they saw, and, and this is broken down into two areas that they looked at, leadership and vision. And then learning climate and um. Dispositions. This first slide deals with leadership and vision, and what they were looking for is that first line. Do we have high-quality leadership and a management team with a clear vision, ambition and goals? Do we have a sense of purpose and high aspirations? Uh, do we have an action plan aligned to our priorities? Are we focused on student success? And, and here's what they had to say. Um, as far as building cognitive capital. They said that it was clear that we were committed to professional growth, but our vision still needs to be communicated more clearly. Uh, it needs to be sold and supported by the stakeholder and staff, and we've actually taken steps already to make changes to that. Uh, teachers want to feel more supported. They're eager for strategies to improve their craft. It's clear they're committed. Our teachers felt that professional development was a big thing that they wanted, and they wanted us. Next year and the year after to work on providing them ways to improve their and hone their craft. Uh, they want more feedback, uh, more suggestions for improvement. Uh, they felt that we are trying, that we are better than the past administrations. Uh, they do feel that there was a discrepancy between elementary and high school, that the distant of, distance between the schools affected. Staff connections, and uh, one of the reasons that we wrote and received a grant for next year to actually start getting. Our teams together and, and working with each other. Uh, a majority of everyone wants a desire for more communication overall. And it was one of the things that this board told me when I came in, and we've been working on that. Uh, we, we uh, we have some goals on that. Uh, and it, it, they want more of a voice, they want uh, more training, um. They, they want phone calls, uh, they talked about newsletters every other month. Uh, clear communication of events. The, what, what's written here is directly from the S cap committee. This is their words. Uh, as far as the vision, they said they couldn't communicate what the vision statement was. They felt that that statement needed to be condensed, made more catchy, so it could be verbalized and memorialized with ease. Um, they didn't feel that they could assess this category for the board. But they did think that it was impressive that a board member showed up. They said they never, ever see board members show up to these. And I would encourage this board, if they want to. They meant in general, when they're out doing other schools. Yeah, no, that, they, they were impressed that we had board members showing up when other districts don't. Um, they, they, I believe that it would be beneficial if the board could find the time for a couple of days. To actually go to some of these other districts and sit through their S caps and, and rate their schools. And if you guys are interested, let me know. I'll definitely put you in, in, in charge of that. Uh, so they gave us a two, evidence of commitment on that. They felt that we could fly up that pretty easily. Lot of low-hanging fruit was the way they uh, they phrased it. The next one is our learning climate. This was the second one that they reviewed. And they broke this up into two parts, learning climate and learning disposition. Was the school welcoming? Was it positive? Was it safe? Was it accepting? Was it empowering? Uh, did it fully engage students in their learning? Did it inspire them to work towards higher levels of achievement? And for learning climate, they gave us a four. They said there was evidence of practice in that. Uh, they said that our kids by far, and our staff by far, were some of the nicest folks, most welcoming folks they, they, they've been to. That, that students were looking them in the eye and shaking them their hand and saying, thank you for being here. Uh, they were very impressed with the learning climate, and that was at both Prairie Heights and the high school, junior, senior high school. Uh, for learning dispositions, do the students have a growth mindset? Are they resilient? Are they engaged in learning? Um, you know, as far as safe and accepting, they said that, yeah, they feel safe, they feel protected. Uh, however, they would like to see more consistency in behavior, communication and consequences. Um, when we polled the staff, they felt that, that, that that has improved this year. Uh, but that we still have a little ways to go. Uh, as far as engagement, that they felt that the students were compliant in the classroom. Um, that some classrooms had opportunities for student questions, but they felt that most of the classrooms were teacher-led. With, with group course responses, and they would like to see more small group and more uh, student-led learning, as opposed to teacher-led learning. Um, as far as empowerment, uh, students are asking uh, for more extracurricular activities and choices. Other things that they can do other than sports was the way it was phrased. Uh, and they did feel that we had a growth mindset taught, but that only about forty-eight percent of students reported that they had a growth mindset. And they felt that there was some work that we could do there, so they gave us a two, evidence of commitment. They felt that we needed to, to work on that. You're good. So, based on that feedback, what have we done? What have we started putting in place? While the S cap was here, they said, so what is your plan moving forward here? And this was uh, Thursday and Friday, two weeks ago. We said, well, next week, we have professional development. We're bringing in the staff, we're bringing in the community, we're inviting the community. Students to come in and help us work on that. So, we worked uh, Thursday and Friday of last week. Uh, we, our team got together, rewrote the vision and miss- mission statements. Uh, they collaborated and revamped those statements to try to make the vision a little shorter and more, more catchy. Uh, we, 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 they requested uh, that we have mentorship for new staff, and we're working on putting that together. Uh, we are asking the board to switch to a new student information system. Uh, this new student information system will be able to track attendance uh, and discipline for both staff and parents. Uh, teachers will be able to fill out discipline in their classroom when they send a student up. Uh, and have a discipline report that will follow, and those teachers will get a response on, on how it was done. Parents will be notified when that happens as well. Uh, parents will receive notification if their student was absent for the day, that day, absent for the class, that class. Uh, and we, the students will be held um. To ask questions throughout the year, or trainings will be held um, with a point of contact to ask questions throughout the year. With uh, Alma, they have offered that throughout the year. Uh, we are also working on create, we, we, we purchased an app called Parent Square. Uh, this will allow parents to receive notifications in their native language. Uh, hopefully to help with any roadblocks in communication. Parents will be able to um, receive notifications. How they want, they can change that. Do they want text? Do they want emails? Uh, do they just want to have it in their app? Uh, the students will be broken up into different groups, so the football team, if they're coming back from. Wherever and they're gonna stop for dinner, and that they know what time they're gonna be back, they will be able to just send a message to those. Athletes' parents to let them know we'll be back at the school at seven thirty. Um, Parent Square off, also offers us with analytics and dealing with who is and isn't receiving messages, so that we can contact them. And verify that we have that information. We're in the process of that data transfer. It has not flipped over yet. So we haven't been able to roll it out yet. We will also be working on that. Uh, Lori and I are also working on a communication plan update that we hope to have in the next month or two. Uh, once we have these systems in place and we can actually kind of have that finalized. Again, based on the S, S cap, uh, we put together staff calendar. We've added professional development days to do uh, data walks and analyze student datas at the end of every quarter. Um, uh, putting in testing days and other relevant information for staff and teachers. Uh, the staff uh, is, has that access, um, they, it'll be implemented in Google Calendar, it could be updated. Regularly for us to have calendar as well. Uh, we are bringing back the Golden Apple. Uh, especially here at the junior, senior high school, adding birthday cards, bereavement get well cards. Uh, to make sure that we are having that kind of connection. Uh, as, as, as we look at more staff appreciation and things that we can do with them, we, we received that, that grant that we're gonna be using. Do more after-school activities with our staff and show them how much we appreciate them. Uh, we're researching a new way to do newsletters for, for those homes that don't have uh, uh, internet access. Uh, registration forms in Spanish are going to be available on the website and in person. Hopefully, they will be able to do that in Alma. Where they will be able to register in Alma. That's gonna streamline that whole situation, so they'll go online. Or we can put them on a computer online, they can fill everything out, it will go right into the database right as we register them. Uh, the.
If we do that stuff, uh, need to make sure we do free and reduce, because that's where a lot of our money, we can't pay. A lot of those, if they would fill out that form, we never would have had that big list to do. We found that out a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And, and we are working on that. We're probably gonna be putting that in our athletic packets as well. We're probably gonna be putting it in, you know, wherever we can put that form, if they, for participation, right? Um. We, we need to see some improvements in attendance. Um, we're bouncing around ideas. Uh, we, we've received the reengage uh, and get, re-engaging student grants, which we're hoping to help. Uh, which is gonna help us improve CTE programs and maybe. Get these kids in, 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 working towards something that they feel is of value. For their future. So we, we've got that working right now. Um, the Alma, Alma program with the communication as far as discipline, that was, that was brought up as an issue. We believe that, that the new student information system will actually allow us to track discipline issues, uh, track trends. Uh, give us information, not only to react to those, but also to get that information back to teachers, so they know. Right now, things are happening, but they don't know what's happening, because there's no easy way for us to say, hey, this. So they'll be able to see the fact. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, and then we're, we're looking to try to do professional development. That'll be focused on their specific positions, um, to help them. I talked to you guys about the possibility of actually collaborating with other districts, and that's, that's a question I have for you today. As we move forward, because I'd love to add that into the, into the calendar. Uh, these are the vision and mission statements that were created by the staff. Um, we had uh, I think several parents, some were, were obviously faculty. We did have a parent and, and student that did come in as well. Uh, we prepare students in an inclusive community with opportunities and experiences to create successful individuals. And then the mission, our mission is to foster a safe school environment that promotes positive relationships, inclusion through collaboration. Diversity and acceptance, respect with responsibility, sensitivity and honesty while developing the academic and character skills. To serve our students throughout their lives. So these are the priorities that were developed last week. Uh, these, these are the new priorities. So, these are in the order. That our staff put them in as far as being most important. So, under leadership and vision. They thought communication was a big one. Through efficient, productive communication within our district, we will maintain a culture. That promotes a positive environments to support high levels of learning and motivation, while actively pursuing open communication. By listening to our community. Uh, number two, under curriculum and instruction, the learning disposition portion. Our district will continue to provide a coherent, aligned curriculum, incorporating technology. And collaboration which enables our students to successfully achieve local, state and federal academic achievement and graduation requirements. On the next slide. Number two. Again. As they felt both of these were equal, they did not want them to be split. Uh, under professional learning, they, they felt that one helped the other, so much so they didn't want to put one above the other. Professional learning, we will embrace continuous professional learning to increase student achievement. And improve staff longevity and job satisfaction. Our commitment to onboarding, mentoring and career growth will improve our depth of experience and knowledge. With focus on student engagement and attendance. Totally blown away by them writing that. This was not given to them. They workshop this. It was a tough two days, but they did this, and they brought the, this, this language together. Uh, and then for learning climate, number four. Our district will utilize the information provided from the demographic study and master plan. To create and strengthen community partnerships in an effort to resolve issues of expected continuous growth. While serving as good stewards of, of taxpayer. Also very impressed with that. Do you guys have any questions?
A lot of information. Thank you.
It was, uh, it was, it was an intense couple of weeks, I will say. It was really an intense couple of weeks. I ca- I couldn't be prouder of our staff, our administrators, Michelle and Mark, Lori. We could not have done this without everybody coming together. And then that, the Herculean lift that these guys did last Thursday and Friday. I, I, I continue to get people thanking, um, thanking us for doing that. They, they felt that it was a, uh, it, it was very valuable, and they, they felt that, uh. What they said was it was tough, but now they have to own it, because they were the ones that wrote it. That was the feedback I got this week.
What extra activities are they, uh, the students wanting other than sports? I mean, Prairie Heights has the, the classes after.
Right.
School, the, the Prairie Heights been doing all kinds of stuff.
We need to ask them. I mean, we're looking at maybe trying to roll out esports. Uh, we think that might capture some. It's, it's new with Chassa. It's, it's, it's video game is what it is, actually. It's, it's actually competition. It would be in a class after school. It would be.
It is.
It is huge. It is really huge.
There's probably scholarships for that type of stuff. I mean, to be honest, I mean, gaming utilizes. And flexes a lot of part of the.
Some of our best drone pilots were probably video game.
However, that's still interesting to me, so.
And notice, notification of absence, we'll, we'll, we'll get that now.
Yeah, but this is gonna be immediate, and then it'll, it will allow us to follow up on that. One of the things that almost gonna allow us to do is, is the way our classes have been put into the current system, they were not put in with the correct coding. Either. And it doesn't have the ability to track. Th- this new student information system, once. It's going to allow them to actually uh, create classes a lot easier. And then when it's done, you, with one press of a button, it'll actually create Google classrooms for all of the teachers and populate them with their students and similar. Without them having to do. So, so there's a lot of cool features with it, and it's.
Teachers.
It, yeah, and, and to give better communication with parents.
So I, I had a question about the.
He was excited. Uh, Shauna was excited about it.
Back when we started uh, dojo, then junior high and high school should have got in with grade school and learned how to do it. Because grade school used to use dojo constantly.
They still do.
I know it, but I mean, they were excellent, but soon as the kid got into junior high and high school, one or two teachers led the rest, never did.
Dojo is geared a little more elementary, whereas uh, Google Classroom is geared a little more high school.
It is.
Because Google Classroom actually teaches you to learn with the word, word and uh, hour points.
And then you're talking about.
Alright, tangent twins, what else we got?
Hey, I had a question about that Alma.
Hold on, Paul wants to say something.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the question I had about Alma, uh I saw that, uh, there were the uh proposals on the cost. Are that for individual programs or is that all of them combined for a lump sum cost?
Part of nine dot six when we get there.
It, it is combined. There's actually an additional feature. That, that costs a little bit more with Alma that, that our staff feels is going to be much more valuable.
Okay, we'll talk about that in nine dots.
Yes, sir.
I really don't like repeating myself. Alright, what else you got, Ed?
I will talk to Kyle by myself.
No, 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 no.
Later.
It SCAP stuff, yes, but I mean, we went down in the weeds talking about class dojo, guys.
Well, because I think that's redundant, some of the stuff we're doing.
Yeah.
Because parents and teachers don't want to get it together and talk to each other. I talk to my teachers constantly. Dojo with element, they go by, I wouldn't talk to my kids' teacher. On dojo, right? And Google, I hate that Google crap. Google Classroom, I follow everything all three of them do. All they gotta do is read, look. And I'm an idiot on this computer stuff. I think parents and teachers are just being lazy.
More SCAP stuff?
No, I'll talk to Kyle later.
Seriously?
I will.
We wanna hear if you have.
I will talk to Kyle later. No, I just got questions that I wanted to clarify for me that I'm confused on. Let's go next. I will, I'll talk to Kyle and. Give me something to do.
What do you mean? You have so much to do. Alright.
It's rather like to come to this office and we can talk.
Alright, that brings us to nine dot one. We have a motion to approve nine dot one.
I'll make a motion to approve nine dot.
Thank you, Mr. Libber. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Collins, discussion. Oh, that's right. We already pulled Iham out of here, right? Alright. So these are.
And nine him is nine dot.
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry. I forget what these things are. There's so many things. Um. The, um. Okay, so these are second reads. We saw them last month. Again, we, we talked over, um, some of our thoughts on um AC. The only changes that are being made to AC are um selections of options.
For the head dress, right?
No, 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 for like who's in charge of.
Yeah, different.
Stuff. And um so we have some. That we would like to investigate tweaking some of the stuff that's in AC.
Right.
So we are going to bring, we're gonna do some investigation over the next month. And if there's things that we can change to our liking, we're gonna bring AC back next month for another change.
Yes.
Right?
Okay.
I'm gonna start that in red on my notebook, so. Um, I work that between and on that. Alright, any questions, comments, concerns, just further discussion on uh Casby policy update second read? Alright, call for vote, please.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Libber, aye. Mr. Rex?
You muted, sir.
Aye.
Mr. Swavy?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye. Motion carries. Casby policy updates are approved. That brings us to nine dot two policy reviews. Do you have a motion to approve nine dot two?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Libber. Do I have a second? Alright, thank you, Mr. Swayze. So these are those, it's been three years since we looked at these policies. And um so there are no changes.
That, there is. We, we had blanks that needed to be filled in. And so the blanks that, it, it was passed without the, with.
Right, without selecting.
Right, so we added school counselor designee, principal or designee.
Right.
To, to put that in. It's a regulation, so it only requires one read.
Right. Yeah, that was. Is that ACR? Or no?
I CDA.
Okay. Um alright, anything on policy reviews?
Is that, is that, is that the one that also included the one on bowling?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I guess on the, is there, is it, would this be the right time for discussion on that? The only reason, the part that popped out to me on that was. The very first thing was like a page and a half questionnaire by the one that is reporting bullying. And I, I just feel that that might be a little intimidating for a sixth, seventh grader to fill out. I mean, I like the investigation reports, but that's kind of part of the investigation is getting those answers from the person that's reporting the bullying. I'm just, I just don't think that we might not get as many reports of it if they know they have to fill out in detail. What the, what the person's gonna do, the investigation's gonna ask them anyway. Just, just my thoughts on that.
And um. Do you have a proposal for modification process or form or anything, or?
Well, I guess, I don't know, maybe just a proposal to modify, to remove the. Or to minimize the uh complaint form.
Um, so if you would like us to relook at that with some specific uh suggestions, please feel free and we can revisit.
I mean, I'll be at the mercy of the board. I mean, does anyone else feel that to be an issue or is everyone fine? Everyone else is fine? I'm good. I just wanted to bring that up.
I like the form in a sense that it documents it. Um I can see where it can be intimidating, but with all the problems I feel like we've been having recently with it. Especially a kid can document it or with the help of a teacher or whatnot, and then they can. Have it in record and then if it happens on a weekly basis or on a monthly, like it's just documented and it's a paper trial. So that way we can say, hey, on this, on this date, like it gives really specific information and it doesn't. Sort of give the telephone aspect of, oh, hey, back then on this date. So I like the paper trail aspect of it.
So the first one, the first exhibit is, is the complaint form.
Yes.
The second one that has all of that additional information, that's for the use of by the administrator to make sure they have. Dotted every I and crossed every T.
And, and I understand that. I, so I'm saying it might just seem again like Randy said redundant of. That the person, the administrator feeling that big workout is going to be. Either asking and getting that information anyway. You know, just, I can just imagine a kid having a form in his hand and trying to fill out. Other kids walk by and say, oh, they're gonna turn me in for bowling.
Well, and I think at the same time that form, I mean, we gotta, that's, this is a process thing, but that form could definitely be filled out.
It could be in the office with the administrator.
Right, in the office with the administrator.
And they can leave their name off of it. It's optional. And then a parent can even use this also.
We're talking E one, right?
Yeah.
Correct. So it says like name of person making the report is optional. And then it's check one, student, parent, staff. So if a student don't feel comfortable doing it, they can always come in with their parent and be like, hey, I need to make a report. Which I like.
Okay. Okay, I'm good. I'm good. I, I appreciate the dialogue.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's what we.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else on policy reviews?
Well, we, we haven't voted nine, three yet, right?
Nine two.
No. Round nine two. No. No.
Oh, well, then I totally. I, I was explaining. My bad.
Alright, call for vote, please, sir.
Ms. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Libber, aye. Mr. Rex?
Aye.
Mr. Swavy?
Aye.
And Mr. Underwood?
Aye. Motion carries. Policy reviews approved. Brings us to nine dot three IHCDAR revision. Do you have a motion to approve nine dot three?
Make a motion to approve nine dot three.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Discussion.
So this is where I filled in all the blanks, principal.
So not in the reviews?
No, no. I was off one.
Yeah. Um. Right, so this was just, this is just bringing it up because we found the fill in the blanks not filled in. Right. Alright, any questions, Mr. Rex? Anyone else? Alright, call for vote, please, sir.
Ms. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Libber, aye. Mr. Rex?
Aye.
Mr. Swayze?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye, motion carries. Uh IHCDR is approved. Um brings none down for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic calendar. Do you have a motion to approve nine dot four? Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Discussion.
I'll start it.
I knew you would.
Uh, one thing about me, okay, uh, I'm a firm believer in students in the seat, student in the classroom. We just went through two years of COVID. Two years of teachers or students e-learning. We saw the devastation to those kids. My question is, why would we reduce the number of academic days in this calendar? From all the other calendars that we've had in the past? In my opinion, we should be increasing student teacher time. Um, so we had some discussion with the SCAP. Where teachers wanted to have more PD time. We did increase the PD time with this calendar. Um, what's stopping us from having the same amount or if not more academic days? And the PD time. So my point is, I do not agree with reducing the number of days that our students will be in class.
You know how much they reduced it from last year's calendar?
Uh, last year's calendar was four days. Oh heck, the last three. School years was. One forty-eight days, one forty-eight contact days, academic days. Was uh last year and the year before, the year before.
What was that number again?
One forty-eight. Hundred and forty-eight contact days, nine PD days. So last year and then the year before was hundred and forty-eight contact days and eight PD days.
So we did increase. The day, that the school day. We felt that it worked well this year.
Cause we didn't. Explain, increase the.
Yes, we, we actually lost a week last year. Remember, we started a week. So we had to increase the, the day. I think we actually ended up with one hundred and forty-four days last year because we have that missing week. Um, we, uh. So we increased the, the time the kids are in school, right, for, for a solid eight hours. So it's a solid eight hour day with a thirty minute lunch. Yeah, so. He- here's what I was told. I was told that we had to have graduation on the twenty-seventh. Always the last Saturday in May. I, I, I might have gone to the third this year. I, I, my understanding is it's, that's tradition. I, I really couldn't move it back beyond August. We do have the fall break, which we could add four days in, and that was discussed at the staff development. They, they, they felt uh that that was a beneficial break between the first and second quarter. I still have the other four, bless you. I have the other four days that I would love to add to this for professional development days, but that would be obviously non-student contact days. And um, you know, I've given you those dates. And I have those, if you wanna know which ones they are. The dates, and these are scheduled already by them. So nine thirty. Eleven eighteen. One twenty. And three thirty-one. You'll see three thirty-one does fall right in the middle of spring break. Um, my, my actual thought was dropping those uh four teacher workdays and adding the other ones as professional development days. Uh but obviously for three thirty-one. Um. They would, uh, they would either have to do that one during spring break or they would have to do a teacher work. Those were my thoughts. How do we get there? Do we extend it, you know, that extra week? I mean, it's, it's just the way May fell this year. I felt like it ju- it just feels like we were squeezed this year. Uh in order to keep it on the twenty-seventh, the last Saturday in May. Um, do we add back in the four contact days in, in, you know, for fall break and then?
You know, we've never had fall break before, I would.
We've had a couple of days. One day.
Yeah, one day.
But now we got a whole week.
So, so, and, and I'm fine with that. I, we can have that back.
So, was this calendar?
Like the Thursday and Friday. I remember fall break was, it wasn't one day. We did a Thursday, Friday. And then they had the longer weekends.
Right.
Um, it was never a four day. But I do know that town schools, I know not the person they get a week. I mean, I feel like however we don't, we are our own district.
We are.
I feel like that's been more, I feel like that has been more of a uh thing just within all districts. Is wanting a fall, or having a fall.
They have a five day with the school.
No, I agree.
Now she go more hours than we do, or days.
Well.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and, and the, in the claim, the claim that they're in the classroom or hours of the day, I don't, I don't see that, cause I know when I drop off. Or pick up my kids when they aren't riding the bus, it's the same time that it was last year, so I don't, I don't know where the extra time comes in.
Alright, I have a question before I.
That has one too.
I know. I, um, was this put together by a committee?
I tried to get it put together by a committee. And um finally I put together what I gave and then it was given out to the committees to review. And then we reviewed the entire document on Thursday during the staff development date with all staff members. And, and I asked them, I, I didn't tell them. I asked them what they wanted to do.
Okay. Mrs. Patrick Cardison?
So they just want.
Correct. So we would have to, we'd have to lose the fall break, I think, at, at least. And I also, like I said, how attached are you to the last Saturday in May? Because in my mind, this, this schedule should have gone that one way.
We've never gone.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, I mean, always.
Not only that, we're one of the few schools that makes the seniors stay the last week. All other schools have been out. Their, their seniors gone.
I thought we did that too.
Graduation, graduation for some of them in town or on the twentieth. Or we're doing the twenty-seventh.
So let me ask this question.
We do have twelve contingency days built in, so we're meeting the hours.
Right, right. Um, this regional PD day thing, why is everything on Friday? I think I know the answer to that question.
That's when they scheduled it. They may be off on Fridays.
Define they.
I know Kit is one, Carville's one. I'm not sure who the other two are. They definitely may be off on Fridays.
So.
Can we compromise and do two Mondays to Friday?
Yeah, there we go. See, that's where I was going.
That way they have to put skin in the game too.
Yeah, that'd be real nice for them to put skin in the game. Um, I'm, so I'm not at all opposed to regional PD days. I love the idea. Um, so don't. Take my snarkiness as that I don't want to do. I'm, I'm here with you. But, um. You know. Uh, as the proposed dates stand, that's three days of contact days we're losing. Uh, contact days we're losing. You know, I'm thinking, we gotta reclaim. If we're gonna do this, we definitely gotta reclaim like October eleven, twelve, thirteen.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Or at least eleven, twelve. Did you say when you were in?
Yeah.
They had two days?
They did the thirteen, fourteen.
Usually the half day on Thursday, August, Friday. Is a very release.
So then that'll make up two and a half, but then that still leaves us at the one forty-four. Or thereabouts. I don't know how.
So, hey, silly, silly question. Just because we've done something somewhere forever, is that the best reason to continue to do it? I mean, is it gonna? But is it gonna ruin the world if we actually have graduation the first weekend in June?
As long as you're standing front and center for the stoning.
Uh, well, nevermind. I was gonna say, what? No, no, I was just gonna say, well, if we have the attendance there for the stoning, we do report meetings, and I would, I think I'll be fine.
Yeah, I know, right?
Cause everybody disappears on that big weekend.
I mean, the first of June, everyone's gone. Pretty much if you're gonna go on a big teaching.
Yeah, but that's. It's because we've had graduation on that weekend forever, and people have gotten into that habit. And I, I, you know, I'm not opposed to bumping graduation to the third, sir. Your thoughts?
I'm not opposed to it at all. Uh, I'm just saying our grades are not reflecting reducing our student contact days. Our grades are reflecting less increase our student contact days.
I get that.
Whatever we need to do to increase it. We're already, like I said, a five-day-a-week school is a hundred and sixteen days contact days a year.
But how many hours is that?
I, I don't care about the minimum. I, I, I never shoot for a minimum hours.
I'm asking.
Required hours, but then there's what we should shoot for, which is as many hours as we can possibly get in, in a school year.
I hear you, but I don't think you understand what I'm saying. How many hours on those five-day schools are those kids in a classroom?
If they let them out in how early.
And, and I, and I'm not really talking so much about the hours. I'm talking, why would we wanna shoot for more days off? If that was the reasoning that I was told earlier. That the staff was shooting for more days off, so we wanted to get them, well, we're already getting a lot of days off compared to a five-day-a-week school. This is the benefit of having this great school of ours doing four days. We're already reduced number of days a year. So why go low? That's.
If we add four days, we've got sixteen contingency days.
But by contingency days, you mean?
Days that are scheduled.
Call a snow day, and at the end of the time, we'd still meet our required hours.
Why wouldn't, why would that go to contingency if we added four instead of, I mean, the total day is one forty-eight?
Cause anything over?
Anything over, anything we add right now is gonna add to the contingency days. Do you see what I'm saying? So that's how many extra hours we will have done. Right now, we're already doing twelve days.
I'm not, I'm not, uh, the.
And I'm not for the minimum.
And, and pardon me, um, professional educators in the room. I'm not a professional educator. And, you know, I, I don't think of it as contingency days. You know, I look, I understand, right, I get it. State says we have to have one thousand eighty contact hours minimum. And so if we have more than that, I don't, I don't put it in my brain as contingency. I put it kinda sort of in the lines of what TJ was saying. There's additional opportunities to excel and, um.
Bring those D's and F's up to C's.
Maybe, right.
I don't disagree with it.
Even if it's just one more.
Alright, so now let me ask this question.
Fall, the fall breakout, uh, fine.
Hold on, hold on. So. This academic calendar is an action item because, dot, 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 fill in the blank. Budget, we need it for budget, we need it for?
We've gotta submit it to CDE.
By what date?
May.
Of course, it's before the board meeting. Um.
Could we split the day? This is just an idea real quick. We started school the first week of August for the last handful of years.
Yeah.
Instead of the second week. So, I mean, if the teacher said that that fall break is important, I'm not saying have it all. I'm just saying, could we start school on like August third, after the parent development days or, uh? Oh, cause those are professional.
Those are PD, that's, that's our onboarding and our mandatory.
The last week of July?
That's case conference. All administrators are gonna be at their professional level. Most schools don't start until like the ninth.
Correct. But they have to go five days.
Schools, most schools are five days a week.
No, most schools are four days a week in the state of Colorado.
Right.
I'm not gonna argue.
Most, most school districts, if, if you go add them up.
Sheer numbers maybe, but yeah, I don't know about that. Anyway.
Yes.
Rural schools are maybe.
And, and the vast majority of districts are rural schools.
Mr. Ricks?
No, I just shaking my head on the claim that most schools are five days or four days.
Yeah, we, I, but I don't, I don't consider that relevant to the point that we're having. Do you still have a question?
No, I was just saying, since it was brought up, I still.
Talking to Mrs. Hall Underwood, sir. Um.
Has to be there by May eleventh?
Yes. Alright, so we need our calendar submitted to CD by May eleventh. So, cause what I. Yeah. So. Alright.
And not to add to this, but we have our parent-teacher conference in person on contact days. So, we look at the, go down, uh, in-person conference, our first one's October sixth. That's a contact day for students, so. That one day for parents to come in. To have face-to-face with the, with the parent, or parent to teacher. So that would be in the contract as well with teachers for extra hours. Right, cause it's not gonna work a regular school day that day. They're gonna stay after the parent contact.
They have a certain number of, of. Yeah, they have a certain number of days that they have to show for, and that would be part of those, that number.
Okay, so I personally, because I think we want to. Make the proposal for at least one or more of these rural PD days to be on Mondays.
I have to ask.
I know, that's what I'm saying. That was, that was the first clause of a sentence.
Sure.
That I think we should table this and have a special by May eleventh. Once we get the answer to that, then, like for instance, if, um. If we get two of those days on Mondays, right? If we don't lose two contact days. And then we could add October eleven, twelve, or actually, since they were talking about break at the end of the quarter, maybe we add thirteen, fourteen. And take eleven, twelve off. Just kinda trying to do out of the box thinking, recapture a couple of those days. Yeah, I'm not sure we need a full week for fall. I mean, cause the next month we have a full week for Thanksgiving. And then the month after that, two weeks for, for holidays, so. Um. I, I personally don't have any problem reclaiming some of those fall break days. But until we know whether or not these regional PD days are gonna be on Mondays, I don't think that we're ready. To make a proposal one way or the other.
With the school hour starting at seven forty, is that gonna affect what time the bus runs? What time the stop, they get picked up at the stops?
No, no, they're, they're here by seven thirty.
They're already doing it.
Yeah.
That takes up their breakfast time.
Breakfast is considered home room.
Okay.
And, and so we have a home room, we have announcements, we do the pledge.
Okay. So.
So, I am thinking about, um, making a motion to table this until such time as we can. Get an answer on those regional PD days.
I suspect it's gonna be no. I mean, I, I, I would plan on it being no, and. I would recommend we say it's going to be no.
How about?
Take the vote today, and then if we do a special, if we, if I can get it, I'm, I'm asking him now.
Um, did, give me the email addresses of all the board presidents, and I'll bet you it's not gonna be a no.
Okay, I can do that.
Cause that's a load of crap that they're proposing. Oh, let's take it off on our day off. And we gotta burn three, luckily, at three contact days and a day of spring break. That's just. If, if you're not gonna compromise, well, then, I don't know, maybe we'll play.
Well, and, and I think that's it. I think it was an offer to us after they saw what our teacher.
Regardless.
They're doing it regardless. They already had it, and then we were invited to the party, and I would say. That's why I think it's probably gonna be a no. I'm asking. But that's why. I, they've already had this planned, and we were invited to it, once they saw what our, our staff said.
Okay. So then, alright. Making the assumption that those four dates are the dates.
I've already sent him an email.
So, is the, uh. Is, is the staff gonna do a uprising because we're taking a day of spring break? Spring break?
I would recommend, Randy. That we, we make that one optional for them with the understanding that they're gonna have to make it up on, on a different Monday as a workday. Because. Here's the thing, if we're gonna add, if we're gonna add those. Additional teaching days, I think we take away the workdays. Cause we're gonna add in. So if you take, if you put fall break back in, you're adding four more teaching days, right? So instead of workdays, those become teaching, student contact days. So, because we're then adding those other four, I would probably take those off. I, I would have to see how those numbers work out compared to what their contracts say this year.
Okay, so now I'll make a motion to table this until it's more further refined. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Lippert. He beat you in, Paul.
I do need, what, what is, what is the board's ask here?
Um, hold on, we have a motion to table. Um. Call for the vote, please, sir.
Can I say something first?
After you vote. After I vote technically.
Let's come.
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Right, motion carries, uh, I should say the motion is tabled for future work. So now let's talk about what it is that we're looking for. So, again, I'm one with five. Um. I, I, you know, if you're gonna, if we are gonna participate in this regional thing. Um, then, you know, obviously you gotta change the colors of those three, four dates on the calendar.
Correct.
That's gonna drop us three contact days. I say then you, it, per minimum, gotta make up three contact days somewhere.
That would be fall break.
Is, is, and then? Thoughts?
Let's still reduce this by four days a year.
From, compared to last year, right?
And the year before, and, you know.
If we take all of the break, we get one day back, so we're back at one, we're back to one thirty-five.
But it says it's not gonna add.
No, 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 it's, 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 it's semantics. It's, it's language. It's not math. Um. But I don't know where we make up those other days at that point.
Days away from. TJ, you looked at the old calendar. Where are we taking the days away from?
We started earlier.
Um, well, a lot of it, we took some days away from, we, we, we extended our fall break. Down week, and we also took away three days for the, uh. Come on, that, uh, that, that, what we were just talking about.
Oh, those three days?
Yeah. So that, that's.
Are you talking about the first PD days in August?
The Fridays that would.
The last days of the quarter.
Right.
That's where they come from.
Oh, yeah, look, they stick out when you start looking at it. Bam, bam, bam.
Cause that's where the, they were, wanted to do the data walks. They wanted to, to do the research on it. So. What if? We change those days? What if we leave the calendar as it is? But those last days of the quarters move to those, uh, workdays? Those workdays become the PD days? And now you're at one forty-eight.
Um, so you're talking, like, make the twenty-third, move the work, the professional development work.
To the ninth.
To the ninth?
The seventh, to the seventeenth.
Okay, you're, now you're really confusing. October seventh, the work that you, that they were gonna do.
A student day.
Right? And the work that they were gonna do on the seventh then goes where?
To the seventeen.
Okay, that works for that one. And then the twenty-third goes to the ninth. And the seventeenth goes to the twentieth. What was scheduled on seventeen, nine, and twenty?
Those are teacher workdays, just to, for them to get ready for their.
Oh, so those weren't PD days?
No, those are teacher workdays, not PD days.
Hmm. So, what do you all think the staff's gonna think of that?
So kids come in five, five days that week? No.
No, no, that, that becomes a professional.
Haven't touched that.
Oh.
Hey, Randy, since this was, uh, already voted on to be tabled, should we not table some more and then have like a?
When it, we're trying to special meeting. Now, we're, we're trying to get him to the point where, um, we're giving him direction on how to move forward. Or suggestions. Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on this anymore until we hear back from the regional PD stuff. Yeah, I'm with you. Um.
Well.
Clear enough?
He said, maybe. We have Fridays off. Let me see what I can do.
We stay up. Um, alright, so. When you, we got that, we got that?
Yeah, Robert's a good guy.
Possibility, so we're gonna, we're gonna wait till you finalize that, and then do some more math, then.
Any chance we could call a special on one of those Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Before or after?
Yeah.
That might be a good time to just take a quick vote.
Before five-thirty.
Yeah, but we could take it right after.
Honestly, it's a ten-minute recording.
Yeah. Did you say the eleventh?
They are.
Yes, she said the eleventh. Alright, so that motion.
It's the tenth.
No, no, it's due.
Oh, it's due by the eleventh.
Well, we're not in.
Make sure that when you submit it, it's right, and it'll be fine. Alright.
Um. So, is, is it the board's request to have one forty-eight? Is that what you're trying to get to?
I. I don't, I don't know that I want to get to one forty-eight, but I want to get as close to one forty-eight as possible person. Mammy, had your hand raised?
Ah, that was.
What?
Right.
Well, I actually think. Yeah.
That was changed. Cause we did those two days.
Yep.
What's the date today? What's the date today? Twenty? We took those two days. Right, but, but we changed it and we gave it so that was one forty-six. Because we changed it. Yeah. So this year's one forty-six, even though the calendar we approved way back in the day. Right, one forty-eight. We took those two days, so this year's one forty-six.
He requested two more days.
Sure, sure, sure. I, I, I would like to point out to the board, if I may. The requests. I have never been anywhere where staff requests more professional development days. Nowhere. That is not a thing in education. Please give us more PD days. They are routinely mocked. For our staff to go down this road speaks high to their character.
And I agree.
It is, it is. It is extraordinary.
But not, but not at the sacrifice of contact.
Right, how many Mondays do we have in this school?
So.
Ma'am.
One forty-eight.
I think we've been throwing around the word sacred a little much. Important. Alright.
Yeah.
But. So here's what I would like to ask the staff. Me personally, and I really don't mean this as snarky as it's gonna come off, but. You want more PD days, I'm with you. What's more important to contact days or PD days? Right, because it seems that contact days are less important than PD day.
Educating the child should be more important.
But our grades are showing. I know, I, PD days.
See now, that was way more snarky than what I.
I didn't mean to say it that way.
Correct. Right. Especially in the ever-changing day and age nowadays. I think the PD fills their tank.
Somebody repeat what's being said.
Say again, Paul?
Can somebody repeat what's being said?
Oh, we're sorry. So I asked the question, what's more important, PD or contact days? And Mrs. Moore basically said that if it's, uh, well put together, well thought out, and well executed. PD, then the PD day is more important than the contact day.
She's able to fill her soul and fill her cup up.
Oh, and then, yes, right. And then, um, there was a mention of the past two years of COVID and. And tanks drained and refilling tanks is, is a PD is, is a way to do that. Um.
I, I agree totally with that on the teachers, totally hundred percent, but look at the other side. What about them children? Can't tell me they get an education. We got sixth graders that should be in fifth grade. We got fifth grade should be in fourth. We got seventh graders that should be in sixth. They got passed because of their age group. They just show them forward, but their grades last year were pathetic.
I think it's a fine line, a very delicate line.
Very fine line.
I think also it should fall on the parents as well at home. Like, it shouldn't all lie on the teachers to. Get the kids what they need because parents need to support their students at home as well. And I feel like that lacks major in this district. And that's where parents have to be accountable as well.
So.
I know we can only control the administration and the culture of the school and what's, we can control here at the school. We can't control what goes on at home, but the harsh reality of it is also that aspect.
So you wanna leave those, um, end of quarter breaks where they are? Right, so the October seventh. What you were gonna do there stays, it doesn't move to the seventeenth. We reclaim, say, the thirteenth and fourteenth. And then if we can get a Monday or two out of this regional PD, that'll bring us to one forty-eight.
If the Mondays. Yeah.
Alright, so we got a couple of options. We're gonna wait till we hear back from this regional.
At least we got a maybe.
Okay.
We got, I was surprised we got a.
And then, um, and then we'll talk about it.
And you're right, it was because they're off on break.
Yep. Cause I'm very rarely wrong and there's only one other option. Um, alright, that brings us to nine dot five, BEE to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three board meeting dates. You have a motion to approve BEE.
I'll make a motion to approve BEE.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Lippert. Um.
I'm happy that none of them appalls on mine, my daughters or any other important date.
Oh, I didn't even check my birthday. Hold on.
Thank you for that.
I didn't even check that.
Right?
Um, so one thing that I did not check. When I was going through this, no, is our policy says that it shall be on Wednesday, third Wednesday in the month unless. Or except for December. Um, are we compliant with that?
Yeah.
It, well, that was so that we had enough time, right, to.
No, the, in the policy, the, the December exemption was always because of Christmas holiday break time. It was weird. Sometimes we go on holiday break.
I thought it was so you could move it to take the vote.
December one, so there was a very special reason. Um, I picked that day. You're welcome. Because, uh, mill levy verification validation is due December fifteenth in the state. So I'm saving this as special. See how, see how wise I am after seven years of doing this?
Chew in your horn and let's get on with it.
You should say tangent, tangent. Okay. Oh.
Yeah, that's not, he doesn't have a problem repeating himself when he's talking about himself.
Alright. Anything non-snarky?
No, let's just go.
Alright, call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs.
Aye.
Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks.
Aye.
Mr. Swayze.
Aye.
Mr. Underwood. Mr. Underwood.
I'm sorry, sir, aye. Motion carries. That brings us to nine dot six, upgrade student information system to Alma. Do I have a motion to approve nine dot six?
I'll make a motion to approve my dot six.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lippert. Discussion. How much is this gonna cost us? Um, three thousand dollars a year more than our current student information system, but at the same time. We are utilizing more features than we have to build.
And seven thousand dollars more to set up, right?
Seven grand to set up this year.
Yes, and that is also because of that additional feature, otherwise that wouldn't be it. We could do it without that, but I did check with, with staff and they're like, no, that's what makes this so awesome.
And this is a system where we can track discipline. Teachers can look up and see like how it was all followed out.
Yes, and we're hoping our, like, our, our RTIs will be able to be tracked in here. We'll be able to create forms in here. It'll, it'll follow the student in here.
And this system is more closely integrated with our parent square communication.
Is that where this came from?
And, no, and, and it's better for data, I think. With CDE and, and sending data to see, they were the first ones during COVID. Capturing it and sending it to, to them. And the customer service is also. Better. We've had Go Edge to start go down several times this year.
Really?
Yeah.
I like Go Edge.
But yeah, it has gone down.
What was that?
Say again, Paul?
No, I agree, yeah. Uh, when Kyle said it has gone down, it just started, has had some issues for sure.
So.
This is more reliability.
Yes.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm all about upgrading. Uh, if it's, if it's what the educators say is a better tool. Let's do it. They're, they're the experts. I'm, I'm gonna back up.
Mr. Swayze.
I'm good.
Mr. Ricks.
No, just, uh, you said in conjunction with parent square communication, does that mean that class dojo is going to be kind of null and void or recently years after some years ago?
Yep, we are gonna migrate away from it, right?
Class dojo is free. So I think that's a good decision for our ed, our teachers. And our, uh, our elementary parents to decide. If, if it's working for them and it doesn't cost us money, I, I don't think we yank that part from them.
We don't want duplicate data and duplicate systems or we don't wanna.
Like if we're gonna go to one, we should just focus on one.
If they're compatible with each other, if you fill one, it fills the other, then okay, but if they enter the data twice.
They're not gonna have to enter the, the data twice for that.
Okay, we're gonna train, uh, parents at home on how to use this stuff?
Um, I believe there's, I don't know that there's training time, but we could certainly set something up to bring the parents in. And, and teach them how to use this.
When students get registered or something, maybe we can give them like, like a paper.
They actually, this actually has an online feature where parents can register from home. Right. And it actually uploads all of the information.
Send out easy messages. Um, definitely.
It has that feature as well, where we can send out those messages. Or we could do that in parent square. So we'll need to decide what that communication piece looks like also.
Like if it's district-wide.
Correct.
Do that. If it's like school, then maybe parent square or grade level.
Well, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Anything else?
So we're, so nine dot six B from Harris, this is just what it would be.
Correct.
We were to stay with Go Edge.
I wanted to make sure you guys had all the information.
Okay.
Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs.
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Underwood.
Aye, motion carries. Right, that brings us to nine dot seven, mission, vision, statements, and SCAP priorities. Do I have a motion to approve nine dot seven? Thank you, Mr. Lippert. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Discussion.
That should be one, two, two, four.
Yeah.
I just want that to be clear. It's okay, no worries. Since they're voting on it, I just make sure that it's, it's.
Yeah, I was there for that discussion where they're trying to make it a one, two, three, four. It wasn't gonna happen.
No.
They were deadlocked.
I just wanna thank you everyone for everyone's, um, input and help with this. I really like it. I like the vision statement. I like how it's just crisp, small, to the point.
Danielle, they were incredible.
I give it to the teachers and staff. They were engaged on it and they really were focused and, uh, it was motivating to be there. I, I felt great.
Awesome.
So let me ask this question.
They do good. They're, you know.
Maybe just rhetorically. Um, it seems like on the priorities there. They use a lot of words to say something that I think could be said with a lot fewer words. Is there, is that intentional or just because of group think or? Well, I wasn't there. I'm assuming you were.
You want it to cover everything. You didn't wanna leave nothing up to camp.
Right.
No gray lines. That's how I took it. Nope. I like it.
I think they read well.
Alright, uh, Mr. Ricks, you unmuted there. You have something?
Uh, no, I just was wondering why that was necessarily in the action items. Is it affect price or?
Cause the, this is the board adopting this as our new mission statement.
And priorities.
And vision statement.
Which is our strategic.
And goals. This is basically, if you look back, um, probably before you guys moved into the district. We had a strategic plan. And that was the board setting the strategic direction of the district. And in that strategic plan was mission, vision, and goals. They didn't call priorities, but. So this is the equivalent of that in SCAP.
Fair. Alright, thank you for the explanation.
This sets the direction of the district for the next two.
Like one of our most important jobs.
Maybe three years. It depends. The SCAP may expand to a third year rotation as opposed to a two-year rotation. We'll find out this summer.
Actually hope not. I like the two-year.
I, I think there, there, there's discussion about whether you have enough time to fully. Plan, implement, evaluate before you suddenly are in it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs.
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks.
Aye.
Mr. Swayze.
Aye.
Mr. Underwood.
Aye, motion carries. That brings us to nine dot eight. Temporarily suspend IHAM. Do I have a motion to approve nine dot eight?
Make the motion to approve nine dot eight.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Discussion, sir. It's your motion. Yeah, to suspend IHAM.
Oh, yes, yes.
I know, it's been a long day.
I, in my opinion, it needs to be rewarded, uh, to reflect the priorities of the district. Um, I think it's too open-ended the way it reads right now. So we have to take a little bit of time and look at it and work correctly. Right now, it just opens us up to too much.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Ricks, you good? Alright, call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs.
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks.
Aye.
Mr. Swayze.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. IHAM is suspended until further notice. That means the district does not enforce policy IHAM. Hmm, you could pull it down.
Yeah.
It is no longer in effect. Right, that brings us to information updates, questions, comments, concerns.
I love him.
It was, it was a busy month between the last board meeting and this one. Uh, a lot was done with SCAP. And the testing and January, Christmas, it's been, it was really dynamic thirty days and the. We got a lot done. I thought it was amazing these updates. I appreciate it.
Ditto. Anything else? Alright, that brings us to eleven dot O executive sessions. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss security details. Uh. Sorry, to discuss specialized details of security arrangements or investigation, including defenses against terrorism. Both domestic and foreign, and including where disclosures of matters discussed. Might reveal information that could be used for the purpose of committing or avoiding prosecution for a violation of law in accordance to CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four, D. And to move into an executive session to discuss personnel matters. Um. Except if the employee who is subject of the session has requested an open meeting, which he has not. Or if the personnel matter involves more. Or if the personnel matter involves more than one employee, all employees have requested an open meeting. In accordance with CRS twenty-four, six, four, two, four F. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs?
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Swayze?
Aye.
And Mr. Underwood?
Aye. Motion carries. We're moving into executive session at nine twenty P M. Oh, tortoise. Sure. Take your time.
Two seconds.
I manage a restaurant.
Do you?
Yeah. Uh, Western Omelet in California.
Yeah.
Yeah, TJ that we should request a day after a board meeting off too.
There you go.
I guess we'd have to close school, there'd be no bus drivers. I'm a sub and I haven't had a day off yet.
All right, are we live? All right, we're reconvening at 10:28 PM from executive session, everyone. Um, all board members and superintendent are present. Um, so that brings us, hold on, Lori, can you just look at the Q and A, please? Yeah. Okay, um, that brings us to 12 dot one employee handbook letter of a motion to approve 12 dot one.
Um.
Other business? 12 dot one, we added that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, still have a second, thank you, Mr. Slaysey. Um, all in favor, it's call for the vote, please, sir. No, you gotta draw your lines.
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye, Mr. Rex.
Aye.
Mr. Swayvee.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, that brings us to 13 adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Do we not have a 12 point one?
We added it in modification of the agenda.
Right, I'm sorry.
Here's what I found on the map.
I'm gonna kill this.
We just voted on it.
I missed that.
Mrs. Combs made the motion to adjourn, Mr. Lippert made the second call for the vote, please, I mean, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned, good night, everybody.